Okay. May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on October 29th, 2024 in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in a newspaper and on district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools in a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on October 11th, 2024. They included Daily Record, Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Parsippany Patch, and the district website. This regular public meeting is being video recorded as per law 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and your video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names and your statement professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Rarios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldruck?
Here.
Mr. Chaffa?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our student committee report. Who would like to start?
PHHS.
Sure.
Good evening, all. I hope you all are doing well today. Starting this month's PHHS report with student council updates. Par Hills hosted their homecoming on Saturday, October 26th at 6:00 PM. Additionally, we had our first pep rally for the year last Friday on the 25th during the second half of the school day at the football field. The pep rally was well enjoyed, the favorite event being, as usual, teacher versus student dodgeball. The other game played was relay race. This year's fall pep rally had a new segment addition during which as few students were recognized for their outstanding behavior inside and outside PHHS classrooms. In terms of upcoming events, student council is now finalizing prep for their event, Halloween at the Hills, which will be held on Wednesday, the 30th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. For those unfamiliar, Halloween at the Hills is an annual trick-or-treating event where typically elementary or lower level students go to different classrooms run by PHHS clubs. Each club hosts games and have their own theme for the classroom, which makes the entire event very entertaining for those who attend. We also had our second college fair on Tuesday, October 22nd from 12:45 PM to 2:00 PM exclusively for PHHS seniors and juniors. That is everything for student council as they just wrapped up two major events and are shifting their focus onto another one this week. All right, moving on to PHHS athletics. Par Hills Boys Soccer had their senior night on Thursday, the 24th at 6:00 PM. They played Roxbury High School and the score was 1-1 even after the game went into wartime. Par Hills also played their last season game today at 4:00 PM against Morstnols and won the game 3-1. Girls Field Hockey had their senior night yesterday on the 28th at 6:00 PM at the Hills. The girls tennis team was named 2024 NJAC Girls Tennis Championship, this being their best season since 1981. Their final record was 18-1, a truly remarkable feat. Par Hills Football unfortunately lost their homecoming game 42-7 to Chatham, which was on Saturday, the 26th at 1:00 PM. That is everything for today's PHHS report. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parsippany High School and I'm so excited to share this past week's events with you. We had our second college fair on October 22nd with a great turnout of students. Colleges like University of Delaware and NJIT brought their representatives for students to discuss their future opportunities with. Our Red Hawks Drama Club hosted their annual coffee house as a place to showcase their countless talents for the student body on October 22nd and it was a great success for the performers. Our National Spanish Honor Society is holding their annual walkathon this Saturday, November 2nd, to raise funds for UNICEF from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. On Friday, November 25th, our school did their breast cancer awareness day by inviting the school to dress up in pink during both the day and our last home game for football. Our school's huge key club event, Halloween at the High, started their preparations today for their event tonight. We're so excited to be hosting this event for the little kids of our community. Congratulations to Sarva Karant and Sachi Kelkar for making the ACDA All Nationals Choir. Sachi made soprano one for the SSAA Choir and Sarva made bass two for our SATV Choir. Our school is advocating for Red Ribbon Week, a nationwide week to inspire students to be drug-free by allowing teachers to wear red ribbons on their attire. We hope that it calls attention to substance addiction and promotes the want to get help for students. For our sports section, our Red Hawks football team won their last home game against Hop Bakong High School with the theme Pinkout for Breast Cancer Awareness and we're so proud. Our Parsippany Boys Soccer Team has a home game today against Putin and they won 2-1 and they just won their last game on October 24th against Moe Beard as 4-0. Our Red Hawks Girl Soccer Team also had a game today at Madison and they're going to do great. Our Girls Volleyball Team also had a game today at Moe Beard and we wish them luck. Next week, they're competing at the NJSIAA tournament and our school will do our best to show our sportsmanship and our excitedness for it. Our Girls Field Hockey Team has a game tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Whipney Park and we know they're going to do great. There's a question from our National Honor Society of Music Triumph on the policy of transportation and field trips this year. So our Triumph Club does a lot of these activities after 6:00 PM where there's a lack of driver for field trips and it can be noted that it is better that these activities happen later in the day rather than during the academic classes. It could be a major deal to see these performances for students, specifically for students that want to pursue a career in the musical field. And the society was just wondering if there could be a consideration to change the policy that prevents transportation for these field trips after school, specifically into New York City to see like Broadway shows or the opera. That was just noted by the National Honor Society of Music. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. Would you look into that? I certainly can look into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. Appreciate them. Any questions from the board on the reports? Okay, seeing none. Tonight, we're going to suspend our regular agenda. We have a special presentation by our own Dr. Nancy DeGante on student achievement awards for 2023 and 2024.
I think I'm good with it. Oh, yes. I'm good with this. Okay. Good evening. I know you have copies of the presentation in front of you and it's behind you. It is always my pleasure to be here for this annual report on our student achievement results for last year, the '23-'24 school year. We'll just get started. All right. Just a little review of which standardized assessments I'll be going over and presenting results for. The NJSLA, that's our big one that the majority of our students do participate in. In English Language Arts and Mathematics, it's grades three through nine. When you get into the math, there's some specific courses which we'll get to, but it's basically three through nine in ELA and math. The NJGPA is also a big one. That's the graduation proficiency assessment. That's relatively new and that's for our grade 11 students. And then NJSLA also has a science component, but that's only given in grades five, eight, and 11. None of that has changed. That's, you know, been the way it's been going. The Dynamic Learning Maps, we call DLM. The DLM is given to students with the most significant cognitive disabilities in the district. It's not a very large population. You'll see slides on that. The ACCESS 2.0, that is the English Language Proficiency Test that we give to our MLs. This is a new terminology now. So ELL, English Language Learners, is sort of changing into MLs now. So our state uses that and many educational agencies now use MLs for multilingual learners with the thought that while these students are developing certainly their English proficiency, they are also gaining proficiency in other languages, their own and maybe even others, their native and maybe even others. So it's MLs, but you'll hear me probably slip into ELL as well, but we're all trying to make that change over to ML from ELL. There was a time when we changed from ESL to ELL. So stay here long enough and we'll just go through the whole alphabet. All right. Then the AP exams, the Advanced Placement Exams, which of course, depending on your performance, can be accepted at colleges for credit, advanced credit. And then the SAT and the ACT, which we see every year too. So I'll be covering all of those for last year. Okay, so here's where we'll start with English Language Arts, with ELA for grade three. And the graphs in front of you and the subsequent graphs for this portion will show you not apples to apples, it's really apples to oranges. These are different students, right? So this is the third grade in 2022 and then the third grade in '23 and the third grade in '24. So we look this way first before we get to a look at cohort growth. And I wanted to mention as well at this point, on all of these slides, when we're looking at these percentages and some changes here and there, we want to remember what we call a significant change because we can see a fluctuation certainly, but when are we going to say a change is significant? Whether it's a significant celebration or a significant time to go, wait a second, why was there like a drop here? And that's 4%. That's been what we've been looking at as a significant change because in our district at any grade level, you have about 500, 550 students. 4% of that is about 20, 22 students. So we've always looked at it as a good number to use, like a class size kind of number to use as our significant bar. So we will do that tonight as well. You will see fluctuation, but unless it's 4%, we won't really call it significant. So you can see here, last year's third grade at 69% proficient, we wouldn't call that a significant drop from the class before it at 71 because it's only two. Okay? So that's our third grade. Our fourth grade. Again, that's been pretty steady. Our fifth grade. Our sixth grade, we would say, oh, wow, look at that, a significant... Remember that. Remember that you feel happy that last year's sixth grade was 10% better than the class before it, I will remind you. But remember that. Last year's sixth grade had a nice jump over the class before it. Grade seven. Grade eight. Again, a little dip, but it's only three. And grade nine, nice significant improvement there over the class before it as well. Okay, so now we go into the growth, right? So what we do here is we look at students who have taken both of the exams, in this case, both, sometimes there's three. All the exams that I'm looking at on the slide, you had to participate in all of them to be in this cohort. So here, for example, these are our current fifth graders. We have to start with them because they're the only ones who have two under their belts. So how did they do in third and in fourth? If a student took third and then moved out of the district, they're not included. And similarly, if you only moved in for grade four, you're not included. We need to see your growth from test to test. So a significant improvement, significant growth, we'd call that, from 72% of them being proficient to 77% being proficient last year in fourth grade. And that's how these slides now with the line graphs will go. Our current sixth graders, also on an upward trend. We like to see that. And our current seventh graders. Remember I told you to remember how proud we were of them? Well, this is their slide as well. So we do see it's right there at 4%, a dip from 75 to 71. But you see, it is all in how you look at the data because the class itself was like, wow, so much higher. And now you go, hmm, what's going on? So this is good information, right? So our supervisors look into this, they can dig down into the skill levels and really see, you know, where are we struggling and tailor and target instruction accordingly. So that's our current seventh. Our current eighth, from 63 to 66. And our current ninth, that's a 3% dip. And that, and then our current tenth, who took it last year, and ninth had a great jump, great, great jump from eighth grade to ninth, 58 to 73. So we like to see that. Now we'll look at the same for math, starting again with grade three, apples to oranges, right? 75 to 76. Grade four, it's a nice significant difference. Grade five, also a nice significant difference. Grade six, nice significant difference. And I'm going to tell you to remember this one too. And that's the same group. That's our, that's our current seventh, who performed significantly better than the sixth grade before them. Here's our seventh grade. Nice improvement. Our eighth grade, also very nice. Now is where we branch off a little bit for math. We have to name it by math course because our ninth graders are taking different maths, even our eighth graders, and in an instance now, for the first time, making its appearance on the slideshow, will be a seventh grade, and I'll explain. So here are Algebra I scores for last year, 55 to 57, okay? Our geometry scores, we do see a significant dip there and you'll see it on other slides. So our math supervisor is already looking into that. I have a little bit more to say about the growth on the other slide, but geometry is definitely programmatically being looked at for specific skill areas that might need some targeted instruction. And this is the slide that's making its first appearance, but I anticipate we will continue to see it. So this would be a ninth grader in Algebra II. That's a really advanced math for ninth grade. So that means that these students took algebra in seventh grade. As we build our advanced math programs in the elementary school and coming right out, we're going to see more of this, but that's why you see such a nice level of proficiency there, as strong math students. Okay, so now let's go to the cohorts in math. Our current fifth grade, that's a nice jump, 76 to 80. Our current sixth grade. And there's our group of current seventh graders who sort of quote-unquote beat the sixth grade before them last year, but here, in terms of their own growth, had a little slide. And so again, that's where our supervisors can work to target instruction, work with teachers, dig into the data we have available to us and different reports about what clusters, what skill clusters the students are struggling with, and really target that instruction. And now these cohorts, you have to follow like different trails, right? Different tracks because some students take different math at different times. So these would be current eighth graders who went from Math 5, Math 6, to Algebra 1 in seventh grade and we're not surprised to see such good performance there, very strong math students. These are current eighth graders who took the Math 5, Math 6, Math 7, more traditional route, and they had nice growth, 5%. These are current ninth graders who took that Math 6 and Algebra 1 in seventh to geometry in eighth. They're currently in ninth. And then you have also currently in ninth, the Math 6 to 7 to Algebra 1 in eighth grade, also strong math students. You have a third slide now because we added the seventh grade algebra. You now have three slides, three possible tracks that ninth graders, current ninth graders could have taken to get where they are today. And this is the Math 6, Math 7, Math 8. And this is really nice growth. It's significant, not only because I said 4% is significant, but it's significant because these are not our strongest math students and yet they are making very nice growth. So this is good to see. Current 10th graders. This is that geometry I said we were going to talk about and that the supervisor is definitely looking into because these are your stronger math students. They took Algebra 1 in eighth and then geometry in ninth and did have a significant dip there. What I can tell you is that's representative of only 10 students. So when you see a dip, I feel like it just always sounds or feels big, but there's 10 students who didn't make proficiency. Three of them were two points away. They were 748ths and it's 750. So not to dismiss it, but it's good information to have and it's the kind of information we look at when we really want to dig in and say, okay, what's going on here? So like I said, math supervisor is on that and targeting that, those skill areas and those kids. And it's good that we can literally know who those 10 students are too and work with the teachers directly. Another current 10th grade track was Math 7, Math 8, and Algebra 1 in ninth grade and that is again really significant growth. That's your lower group. And so 30 to 40 is really good and that's something to be proud of and celebrate. Another current 10th grade would be the Algebra 1 in seventh, Algebra 1 to Geometry to Algebra 2 in ninth. And those are all good. Okay. We report out as well on science and how we're doing there. So here are our results. Remember it's only five, eight, and 11. Grade five. Grade 11, I'm sorry, grade eight. And grade 11. I will say, you know, it's not, that is significant, but it's not atypical to see our 11th graders who are taking the NJGPA knowing that counts for graduation and then being asked to take this, which doesn't count for graduation. It's not really that, you know, unbelievable to see that, okay, they had a little bit of a dip there. But again, supervisors like this information so that they can target instruction accordingly. Oh, that jumped. Okay. Now what we move to is what's called our subgroup data. So we are required to report out on subgroups and how they do in English Language Arts and Mathematics. So we report out on our MLs, our economically disadvantaged, our IEP 504 students. And then I broke it out further this year, which is a new addition to the slideshow, those of you who've been watching and paying attention for many years. I've broken out IEP and 504 into just IEP and just 504. And the state, depending on the report you're looking at, shows it in all those ways. So now I said, you know what, I want to break it out because it's only some that do the combination and some do them separate. So in any event, it's a lot of good news. All of those subgroups showed growth except our ML group. Our ML group went from 18 to 15. We're going to talk about that too on the access test in a few minutes, but every other subgroup did have growth, which was really nice to see. I know it's a lot of numbers up there, but hopefully you can follow the lines and the numbers. In mathematics, we had the same thing. All of the subgroups, with the exception of the MLs, showed growth. And the IEP 504 group, whether we broke them out or kept them together, showed growth. So that was good too on both slides. Okay, I mentioned the Dynamic Learning Maps, the DLM. Those are given in ELA and Mathematics for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities and those are our results there. Out of 65 in English Language Arts, 12 were at target or advanced and 61 in Mathematics, 10. There is a different number there in terms of how many took it because sometimes a student is able to take the NJSLA in English Language Arts, but not math, depending on their disabilities or vice versa. So the numbers can be different. And this would include also our out-of-district students who take DLM. These numbers are not atypical of what we see year to year on the DLM. Skipping, okay. This is a slide I want to spend a little time on. I did a little bit of a different thing than I typically do here and I have a few other anecdotal tidbits to share that I think you'll find interesting. So this slide represents the percent proficient for MLs. So on the access test to measure their English proficiency, what percentage were proficient? You can see 14 to 17, and we saw that growth last year and that felt good, and now we're at 11. And so it's, you know, very understandable to say, well, what's going on? We're lower than we were two years ago. So I want to, yes, acknowledge, yes, we are, but that makes me stop and go, wait a second and do a real deep dive into what's going on here and what can I gather besides just, oh, you're at 11. So a few interesting points. The first one, I included a cohort, you see the asterisk, and I don't typically do this, but I did it for a reason. As I did with the other groups, students who were with us and stayed in our program for those three years and took access for those three years have grown from 2.5 to 3.0 to 3.4. And that really is very nice growth. In addition, my second point, students take, when students come to our district from another country with a language issue, they take what's called a screener. And the screener tells us if they're eligible for services, ML services, ELL services, tells us if they're eligible. The screener score, the average screener score in '23 was 2.2 and the average screener score in '24 was 1.95. They sound very close, but it's only a scale up to six. So that's a significance actually exactly four and I didn't really do that, you know, just happened to work that way. It's 4% different, 2.2 to 1.95 on a six-point scale. So they're coming to us, or they came to us in '24 with a lower starting point. They came to us less able to perform in the English language than the group before it. So that's important when we look at something like, well, why didn't we perform as well? Well, we started lower. But my third point of what's good news about here, and I didn't put all these numbers up there because it's a lot on one slide, but hopefully you can follow or ask me questions. This is really interesting. In '23, I told you the average screener score was 2.2, right? So for a student who took the screener and took the access in 2023, the average growth was from that 2.2 to a 3.3, okay, average. In '24, the 1.95 average to the growth of 3.23 was more growth than the year before. So the 2.2 to the 3.3 was a 57% growth, which sounds good. But the 1.95 to the 3.23 was a 67% growth, 66, 57, 66% growth. That is really good news. So while we acknowledge, yes, it's 11 and yes, we all want to see that higher, within that, there's good news and things being done right and well. And so I don't want, ever want anybody to lose sight of that. So those are some of the things I wanted to mention about the ELL scores, the ML scores. Okay, soaking in the numbers. Okay, our AP courses, these are the courses we offered last year. We typically, you know, include this in our presentation. And then we go through some slides on AP. So those unavaleables are for the state, the nation, the state, and the comparable high schools. So I don't have that information yet. This measures how many exams received a three, four, or five. So the three, four, or five is that range that colleges will say, oh, we'll give you advanced credit. You got that grade or that mark, that score on the AP. The number of exams, so one student could take six or one student could take one. It's the total exams and you see here we're at 76.4, which is higher than we had the last two years, which is wonderful. And we do have to wait to see, there's always those unavaleables at this point that then next year you'll see filled in, but the 76.4 for us, apples to apples, is better. So that's good. And then we do this, which is the AP performance of students, not duplicating. So even if I took six... So, even if I took 6 and he took 1, we each just count one time on here. How many actual students received 3, 4, or 5? And we had 36.9, slightly up from our 36.4. But typically, we are still, not typically, last year, we were above the state and the comparable high schools, so we're hoping to see that continue. And that's also good to say. Last year, those were unavailable, 2023, and now I get to tell you, look, we did better, just like I promised. Okay. Moving on to SAT, same thing, although I am able to get a nation and a state average for the composite score. And we, while we dipped a little from 1171 to 1161, we are still above the state and the nation, and they dropped as well. So, there was a dip there, and I would, you know, predict that possibly our comparable high schools as well. But we won't know that for a while until the school performance reports come out. And then, our ACT performance, really nice growth here for us, 25. And it was 23.7 and 24.5 before it. And I do have the state average for that and the national average for that as well, which we are above. If you look to last year, we were not above the state average. This year, we are. Wait, yes. Okay. Any questions?
Dr. Gigante, thank you. I do enjoy this every year. Do any board members have questions on any of this data? Jack?
Yeah, on the Mathematics, Grade 8, there's no page number, but it seemed like we were looking at numbers in the 60s and 70s, and then in Grade 8 in Math, it seemed precipitous dropped to like 35 to 39. Is there any reason why that would occur?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's what we typically see each year because 8th grade math students are not our strongest math students. So, we're pulling the stronger students out of 8th grade math and putting them in the Algebra, and they're represented on that slide.
So, these are Algebra students?
No, no, those are Grade 8 math students. The Algebra, if you turn the page?
Yeah.
The 8th graders taking Algebra are in this slide. Also, with the 9th graders taking Algebra. So, they go up a little, but they don't shoot up because there's the 9th graders taking Algebra.
So, you kind of pluck from the sample, well, existing 8th graders, and then they're taking Algebra, which is like the higher end.
In 8th grade, it is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But what happens, even though it brings up this Algebra average a little bit, you have the 9th grade Algebra kids who were not, they were in 8th grade Math. So, they're bringing it a little down and they're bringing it a little up, and here it's really just the kids who are not, you know, super duper in Math.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yep.
Michelle, please.
I really appreciate you digging through all this data to be able to give this to us, especially the extra links you went to this year to explain this or some of these things. Turning back to the English Language Arts, current 7th graders, when I turn the page and I look at the current 8th graders, I see a dip there in the middle as well. So, in the previous year, they also had a dip. Is it because the subject matter, or is there other factors in this year that might be causing that dip? Do you see that dip every year or every time you do this trend?
I want to talk about that. Thank you. Just let me go to the right. You said English Language Arts.
English Language Arts, current 7th graders.
I want to go to it for everybody.
Sure. So, if you look at that one, we have the dip to 71, and if you turn the slide, you can see last year, or so you can see for 8th graders.
Yes.
You have a dip in the middle. So, this would have been, if you looked at them last year, they also had a dip. Is there something going on with this?
In the 6th grade?
Yeah.
Yes. Typically, over all these years that I've done this, it's been 4th and 7th where we see the dip. We haven't typically seen it in 6th grade. Certainly, now, we see this year, or these current 7th graders had it in both subject areas in 6th grade. And what they've always said, what the experts have always said, was it went back to brain development in 4th and 7th, and it was not atypical to see dips there. Has the brain research changed and said things are happening earlier or things are, I don't know. I don't know. But what I do know is that definitely our supervisors are very cognizant of that dip now having shifted. And so, they are definitely looking into that and wanting to see, why is that happening? Oh, dense, sure.
Our last soccer game today. I'm not going to share a slide on the results, okay? So, yeah, they're really, so thank you, Nancy, for putting this together, Dr. Gigante. Better you than me because it's really a strong suit of yours and it's wonderful. So, when this, after this all put together, Dr. Gigante sits down with us as a department and we'll look at the results. And far and away, we're really pleased with the results, but there were a few areas that were concerning. One was this 7th grade group in Math and Language Arts. So, Sarah Townsend and Brian went to their department meetings. You can look into, go to the test and look even closer at the specific questions that get those standards. And then, you start to generate questions that are kind of teacher-generated, and then there's some state resources to try to integrate those into the classroom more, to try to strengthen those specific areas that kind of brought our scores down in the 7th grade. So, that was the one area. The other one was that 10th grade group, which is really 10 students geometry group. So, Brian McCourt did the same thing with his teachers, they had to look at those standards and what things we can integrate to try to strengthen those areas. But it was really of those 10, it was those three students who were super close. So, the one thing, other thing I'll say, and this is unrelated, but the last couple of slides were about AP scores. And we're looking at number of 3, 4s, and 5s, and then number of 3, 4s, and 5s total, and then numbers of 3, 4s, and 5s by students, like, separate. What we're going to be watching over the next couple of years, and we talked to the college board about this, is the more dual enrollment you offer, it can have an impact on this. Because students start to play, and parents, they start to play the money game, right? So, I've paid in advance for a dual enrollment course. I know I'm getting credit for it. It's on a transcript that can transfer. It may not make sense for me to take that AP test, where I don't know if a school is going to take that, you know, for additional money. So, I think people are hedging their bets as families, and so, we might see a dip in those scores because of kids just kind of making economic decisions. And I will say, it doesn't really impact us. It impacts the college board, so they want everyone to take the test. But we're, I mean, we're going to put families and kids in the best place to prepare for their future and make good decisions. So, we'll keep it on that. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Dr. Wright?
Thanks, thanks so much for this. I love data. And I have a question, who are our comparative high schools and how has that cohort developed? And then, my, and then I think, I think Jonathan answered everything else.
Okay, so, our comparative high schools, we have used historically for many years. I can name them. They are, not in alphabetical order, Roxbury, Mount Olive, Paquannick, Wayne, Edison. There is a sixth, I think. Morris. Morris. Those are, and you know, back in the days of DFG, I am really dating myself and aging myself tonight with all these references, but back in the days of DFGs, we picked DFGs. And even though those went away, it had just always been decided that they were still comparable to us, certainly Edison and Wayne are dual high school districts, things like that. So, that's who we use.
Any other questions? Shidov?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Gigante, for this. I just had a quick question on the English Language Arts for Grade 3. I was just curious if this was their, if the score is reflecting, because it's their first time taking a test like this in their elementary years.
Certainly, it can, and it always is the first. We have never started earlier than that. So, you can see even from the bars, it's typical to be in this range. And they do go up then, you know, like, oh, I got one test under my belt. Oh, now I'm in the upper 70s, you know? So, yes, I would say it's typical.
Okay, thank you.
And any other questions? Dr. Gigante, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your time. Did I miss a question? Oh, Allison, do you have any questions? Sorry.
No, I'm good. I'll butt in if I have questions.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Gigante. Excellent job. All right. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Okay. Committee of the whole, which will be Mr. Ray, leading our finance committee.
Okay. We have several items on the agenda for the committee of the whole for the finance agenda. First item is the budget calendar. I guess everyone received a copy of the budget calendar. Robin, I'm just going to ask one question, and I'm sure you've got some points to make on it. But one, my one question on that is, are any of the dates problematic? Are they going to be a problem for you or overall?
No. When we went through, when I went through the budget calendar, I made sure that, you know, it was aligned with when the state, you know, due dates are. And then, Joni and I kind of like went over the, what we think is going to be the board calendar for the, for the next year. So, you know, this is only tentative. This does change. So, it's, it's kind of like a, yeah, it's a guideline, exactly.
Okay. And then, Littleton update?
So, the Littleton addition is almost complete. The contractor is working with the building department to get the certificate of occupancy. So, that's where we are with that.
We have any idea when that'll be?
It should be in the next couple of weeks. We just have a couple minor things that the building department wanted us to, to work with our contractor on.
And the audit update?
So, the 23-24 school year audit is going well and is almost complete. All field work was completed last week. So, the auditors were out for a couple of weeks and they are done doing any of the testing. The business office is working with the auditors to submit any other paperwork that they might need. The audit should be completed by mid-November, and this year, the due date for the submission of the audit to the state is January 15th. They did change that date.
Why did they push it back?
I think because last year, it was so hard for the school districts to get it in on time.
Not for you.
No, I told them we were getting it in on time. And we did. But I guess the state did have so many districts that did not get it in on time.
Have there been any issues like with the audit field work that they've done so far? Any, any exceptions, any problems? By the way, I just want to recognize, you were short a staff member, so you went a couple of months and you were kind of doing it on your own to a large extent.
Yeah.
You were definitely shorthanded, so.
Yes.
That should be recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I did have Nick in the office, our accountant. He was helping me all the way. I taught him so many things about the audit, I think. He was like, this is a crash course here. That's right, we're just going to keep on going. But so far, I sat down with the partner, Scott Cleveland, on our account, and he said he hasn't found anything that is, you know, noteworthy. There was really nothing so far. I mean, they're still doing their investigation and their work. So, I look forward to hearing from them in the next couple of weeks to find out how well we did do. So, it seems to be going well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do. There was a lot of talk about a lot of districts switching back to April elections because it doesn't affect the 2%. I do not recall the budget process then. I mean, we didn't have the same timeline.
The timeline is like a month later, I believe, three to four weeks later.
When the April, when it goes back to an April election.
Yeah. That's been so many years for me too.
I know.
I do believe it's a little bit longer for the, for that process because I think you have to go out there and get, you know, people on board to actually vote for your, for your budget. But don't quote me on that. I would have to look it up.
At the time, I mean, if we would, for example, change to April, we, as long as we kept within the 2% budget, it doesn't go for a vote, a town vote.
I think the, and Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it is correct. That's the new, that's what they, they recently, well, I think they passed it a year and a half ago. So, but what they were saying is that it would, it would make a change to when the budget was due for the school, and I wasn't sure.
It definitely changes the date. I just don't know what it changes it to.
And if it goes back to an April date, then it, the, the election costs would come out of our budget, correct?
In the past, I believe it did, and that was one of the driving factors as to why we decided, yeah, it was a savings. It was a lot of a savings. I believe it's like $20,000 to $30,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just, you know, they were talking about that, and I was like, you know, what are the plus and minuses of something like that?
Quick, a couple of questions. On the calendar, we have in the late February timeframe when the state aid figures come out, this is when we know if we're going to have funding, same, different, less, whatever, At this point in time, take me through the process, if you don't mind, between today and let's say, February 26th. Are you planning a preliminary budget and then adjusting accordingly if the state budget numbers don't come out as you anticipate? Or like, what's that process?
So, we, in December, we'll meet with all of the stakeholders, principals, supervisors, department heads, superintendent, myself, business office, we'll meet with them, we'll get the budget together and look at everything that everybody has asked us for. And in January and February, the business office puts it together.
Right.
And then, we'll come to a number.
Right.
And then, when the, when we get the state aid figures, now, Persephone has been very fortunate.
Correct.
We've had state aid figures that have either been stable or been increased. And, you know, we'll talk about if we have to cut because we don't get, you know, the state aid numbers that we hope to get. We'll have something, you know, sitting there saying, okay, well, we're going to have to take it from this line. But, you know, that's, we've been lucky. We haven't had to do that.
Oh, because we were down school boards, especially in a lot of conversations and sessions that I attended, there was a large discussion, especially on the finances, that districts were basically, they were, walked into a buzzsaw once the state numbers came out, and they, you know, all of a sudden now, I mean, a couple of comments that one district was so crippled that they said they couldn't recover. And, you know, so, so those are the things I'm worried about. So, and, and I know, Persephone has, knock on wood, using my head, of course. I am, I'm hopeful that our, we're already losing money on this sometimes, but I'm hoping that we maintain the current status quo. But obviously, there's no way to solidify this budget until you have those numbers.
That is true.
Thank you.
Okay. Along the same lines of the, of the budget and the number and the date, if we went out, could you explain two things? One, if we would need to go out for a referendum, that would have to also be, there's only like three times a year that you could go out for a referendum. So, that, would that cost that same amount of money as an election?
I do not know the answer to that.
I have information.
Because you're going out for a vote. I mean.
Well, according to the presentation that I was sitting in.
Oh, okay.
For doing the referendum, a referendum to kick it off on our end, besides taking anywhere between 18 months and two years, you're looking at $28,000. Not, excuse me, that also doesn't include any, how should I say it, anything, so like, if you hit a point where there's an objection or the state system says, whoa, 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 slow down here, then your number should go up. I think in the example that I sat through, which was Sarreville, Sarreville wound up costing them out of pocket for the district $35,000 before they could get anything on the ballot. The ballot has to go out, I think they said September, because... because assuming that the referendum goes in, and it's passed by the taxpayers, then you're looking at, you can't do anything, you have to go to bid, you can't even sign an agreement probably until early spring of the following year. So, Saraville, right now, they've had their budget, they had their referendum approved, and they haven't put a shovel in the ground yet.
Oh, wow. There's a lot of work that goes into it, I mean, preliminary.
A lot of documents and papers. Bonding, how does that work?
Oh, jeez, you're like calling on my like memory here.
A simple, because, you know, I've heard of, you know, there was one instance of one of the meetings that we had with the mayor, that he said, "Well, we could bond, you know, if they have a better rating." And I don't understand, you know, whether their rating is better than ours, or if we have a rating, that they could bond, but we pay for it. How does a bond work?
Well, the only bonds that I've ever done here were from the bond referendum that we did in 2007 or '06 to do the $40 million renovations that we did in the schools. So, that, I mean, we had to go out to bond referendum, we had to have an election. Then we went and we got Bond Council to come in and help us put together the bond.
And I'm sure there were underwriters involved, investment bankers, and there's a significant fee to that. On a $30 million bond, assuming 2%, $600,000.
Well, is it a different interest rate than a regular loan at a bank, or?
Well, yeah, the percentages are different, yeah.
Definitely percentages.
They're based on, well, it's based on the market, you know, basically the municipal bond market, what the market will bear. And it could vary, especially in an inflationary environment. You could have significantly higher, you could have being issued for 70% or more. And, but there's a fee involved with that, with placing a bond. And then, you're hiring an underwriter in order to ascertain the market, to see what rate it can be issued at, and who's gonna buy it. And they can place it with buyers of the bonds, investors.
And according to my friends over at, was it Spiegel? The guys who put the, Spiegel, our architecture, since their part, they also talked about bonds at that presentation, which I have the slideshow, and I'll forward it to everybody. I only just got it today, sorry. You know, according to him, the school district would have to float that bond. So, and then you would need a, you would need an ordinance from the township, if that's how it's gonna be worked out, to say that they're going...
That's if we involve the town in it, right.
If you involve it, if you do it on your own, then you're on your own. But then you're running the, you're doing the same thing as you do in a, what you call it, a referendum. It's the same process, pretty much, formally explained.
Anything else on Finance, Jack?
No, anyone have any other questions?
Some good questions. Before we jump to our regular committee reports, would any board members like to discuss their experience at the NJ SBA workshop from last week?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, rather than talk about it, could we, like, arrange it so that everyone sense their, whatever they're going to share, if we could do it at the next meeting, whatever we're gonna share, then we can make a small presentation. You know, like, Tim, you know, Tim was gonna share the slides. We all, I'm sure, have slides, right?
I know, I know a lot.
Is everyone?
Well, we can certainly do that next meeting, JB, if we put that on our agenda for next meeting. But Judy, if you'd like something to say?
No, I can wait.
Okay.
We can say it, it was great.
Okay, we'll jump into Human Resources.
Thank you very much. So, the Human Resources Committee met on October 15th. Present were myself, Mrs. Goldrur, Mrs. Mayer, Mr. Ricker, and Dr. Sutter. There were a number of things that we covered, including confidential personnel matters, some general staffing updates, covering four open positions. Three, we were on the verge of filling, and one, we had made arrangements to cover with waivers. For our substitutions, we've been having a successful rate so far, filling 80 to 90%. So, no real concerns there. You will see that we made a couple revisions to existing job descriptions, specifically for bus driver and bus aid jobs. That was really specifically to clarify a number of things. They were very general in nature, and there's been some changes that have come out, and we thought it best to expand them a little bit more for clarity purposes. We created a new job description for a head bus driver, which is, has been reviewed by the committee and is on the bulletin for approval. And then, lastly, we have posted for the elementary world language role, so that we can get that filled.
Any questions for Michelle?
So, for teacher openings, comparatively speaking, looking at prior years, it seems very low. Are we doing a better job at our sourcing this year? It seems to me there's always more openings than that.
We have less leaves, and so it's a little bit easier this year. I mean, as far as I know, in the past, we've had a lot of leaves, teacher leaves, but this year, not so bad.
I'm stealing people from other teachers.
You beat me to it.
We got a great HR guy as well, yeah.
HR is the heart and soul of any organization, so good job.
Yes, Mr. Ricker, he has his ways.
Nice. Sheetho, Communications and Teaching and Learning, please.
Okay, thank you. Communications met on October 14th. Present were Jack, Wendy, myself, and Mrs. Benos. We discussed the podcast update, podcasts are going very well. The administrators are really enjoying them, and you can see that when you watch it. Future podcast topics that are scheduled, and I'll just mention a few of them. STEM pathways, dual enrollment, Pure Air, which I believe is a vaping one, general wellness and SEL. There's one called We Dine Together Lunch Program. How-to in high school, such as getting involved, building skills, finding your support systems. And Target Teach and esports, I didn't want to mention all of them, 'cause the list is long. Jack has suggested elementary podcast on welcoming new students to the school. We also discussed video on-the-go permissions and website. And video on-the-go is now on the homepage at the top for easy access, and we're still working on Facebook permissions. Wendy has suggested we put a list of outside activities together that board members can attend. And some examples were concerts and plays, that'll be coming up. And in order to be more visible in the community, some suggestions included board members being more active, collating a list of activities and invitations to further the connection between board members and the community. And the next meeting is November 18th, thank you. And TLC, forgive me, so forgive me, because TLC met on October 14th. Present were Dr. Mulrooney, Ms. Goldrur, Dr. Wright, and Ms. Mayer also joined us for this meeting. We did discuss a few of the books that were up for summaries in mythology and fairy tales. There were four books that were reviewed by TLC and are going to be on today's for approval. One of the books, let me see here, one book, one school, BMS and CMS. Every middle school student and teacher gets a copy of this book. They'll be reading and discussing in the class, and the program is supported with resource and curriculum for teachers. We also discussed English 4 Mythology, and there are additional seven to eight books that Dr. Mulrooney will continue to review before presenting to the board, as they are all part of the Book Club books. We also discussed English 4 Fantasy, and listed four of the Book Club books being reviewed in this genre as well. Furthermore, excuse me, we went into Academic Pathways update, expansion on pathways, including STEM, humanities, and visual and performing arts. And we want to make sure that parents are fully knowledgeable about the Dual Pathways program, and it'll help guidance counselors prepare their recommendations and transcripts for their students. The Academic Office also hosted parent nights at PHS and PHHS for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and their parents, and it was well-attended, about 600 attendees between the two schools. And there was much enthusiasm about the programs, and as you can see, the presentations and the flyer were linked to these minutes. Supervisors will be visiting BMS and CMS to discuss each pathway in more detail with students and staff. And supervisors will also be hosting virtual Q and As with parents. In addition to that, we also discussed Pathway Sign-Up, which was last week, October 23rd to 25th, using a lottery system to make the process more inclusive and fair for all interested students. We also talked about achieving AP access for all in the workshop. On Wednesday, September 25th, teachers and admins attended a full-day workshop paid for by AP African-American Studies grant. The session focused on widening the net to attract students to try an AP course. And we discussed the benefits of AP and the ways to get more students involved, including expanding the access of the AP courses to both kids who want to just dabble in it or kids who are actively interested in AP courses. We also created a PTHSD flyer that provides information on the benefits of AP courses for students and parents, and it'll be used when scheduling begins in January, including reasons why you would want to take an AP course, preparation for the rigors of college academia, and interest in AP-style activities in the general ed classrooms. Last but not least, excuse me, we also talked about additional curriculum updating, and there were curricula that have updated standards, and some that were reformatted only. And no changes have been made to the list of activities, text, or pacing. And we had a list of 39, which I won't mention, but they're on the list. Thank you very much. And I'll invite Dr. Mulrooney if he wanted to add anything else, thank you.
Oh, hey, thanks. I would say, you know, we're meeting, we had the Pathway Sign-ups. Last week, we're meeting next week to look through that signup to see, you know, what the numbers reveal. Of course, the brunt of the sign-ups are for send pathways, super-popular and well-established. And I think our other two new pathways will be smaller at the start, which we expected. And, no, I think that one of our pushes this year is gonna be to get more students to consider taking AP courses. You know, whether they get a two on the AP exam, or a three or four, studies show that just taking an AP exam, being exposed to that rigor, really lends itself to a lot of success in college. And we, in person, I think we're no different than most districts. You have students who take all AP exams or no AP exams. And there are very few kids who are choosing their spots and taking one or two. So, we really want to open that discussion up, and maybe have some kids take some positive risks. And if after the first semester's not working out, you know, we can make a change for them. But that's the goal, and that's what we're talking about, so, thanks.
Thank you, any other question? Judy?
I think there was also discussion about how books were gonna be reviewed by TLC.
Oh, sure.
Presently, we get all these books to look over, and sometimes that slows down the process of getting it on the bulletin. So, Dr. Mulrooney suggested that the books that they thought might be of interest or want to be discussed by board members would be those books that would be sent to us. We wouldn't get like 10 books, you know, you'd weed through and see, okay, these books we should send to the board.
Any books that could be potentially controversial that contain topics, contain topics that are of interest to the public, right? Whether, you know, you know what I'm talking about. Generally, we weed those books out before they get to you. But, in the interest of getting books in the hands of kids and teachers, for example, one of the books we were gonna purchase or review with TLC was The Wizard of Oz. And I don't know, that's necessarily the best use of your time or our time. That's a book, I think, we can agree that is appropriate. So, we'll continue to provide summaries of all these books. And then the ones that we feel, you know, are potentially worth a deeper look, we'll get copies for you, and then we can kind of do a little discussion of those.
That's what I meant.
Thank you, Judy, for bringing that up.
In addition to that, though, didn't we say, you were still, we still get a little summary of what the book is, so that it wouldn't matter, so that all the board members will still be...
Yeah, so if there's something that maybe we didn't think was worth a deeper dive, then you could recommend that based on that summary we provide. And you know what, we also list what course it's for and things like that, so that'll continue to come. That's always linked, it's always gonna be linked to this TLC agenda. You can see the books that we've reviewed, color-coded and all that good stuff, so.
Now, the Pathway Sign-Up, is that still going on, or there was a hard cutoff?
Two days, it's finished.
Oh, okay, so it was last week?
Yes.
And I just want to confirm, because I, from some people, we approve books that are being read in middle school and in high school. But in the elementary schools, teachers have their own libraries in the classroom. And we do not approve those books, okay? Because a lot of people think, "Well, you approve those books." Well, yeah, we approve the ones that we get from Teaching and Learning, but a lot of teachers have their own mini little, you know, private libraries that we have no idea what those books are in there, okay? So that anybody who, you know, it's like, there are books in our schools that we do not know about. So, making it knowledge, because somebody asked me the question, you know, as to, "How did you not know that that book was being read?" And I'm like, "Well, I don't know, what are you talking about?" And I knew that it wasn't one of the books on our list. And I said, well, and I personally do know that the teachers, I said, there's books in, you know, in every classroom in the elementary, they have, even in the other, in middle school and high school, that we do not approve of. And as board members, we should know that.
So, I'll maybe put Kate on the spot, but I think the legislature passed the Right to Read Act today. So, I think it's gonna make our approval of books a moot point in administrative going forward, so.
But I wanted everyone to know that, you know?
Yeah, you want to comment further on that?
Yeah, so basically, with the Right to Read Act is a ban on banning books, and requiring districts to have policies in a process and a form to challenge books within the libraries that someone may want to pull out. And it provides certain definitions. If you have a policy in place, you don't have to adopt a new one. I would say to you that you have a couple of policies that really have already spoken to this. So, I think when we go through the policy review period, we can check to make sure that that policy hits all the notes that the Right to Read Act requires.
Sheetho?
Just to clarify, is that already, when you said it's passed, that hit the governor's desk?
Signed today.
Okay, 'cause the last I saw, it was just hitting the governor's desk.
And do you know the effective date? Is it immediate, or is it a future date?
Wait, but was it signed by the governor?
It was.
And that has nothing to, but that, does that fall into the category of the obscenity rule that we have? The law?
That's the same time. It's called the Freedom to Read Act, that was signed today.
It takes effect next year, following the date of enactment, so it will be the 25-26 school year.
Okay, so...
Mrs. Mayer?
I think the difference between books at the elementary and books at the middle and high school is the middle and the high school books, with the exception of that one middle book defo that was going to be used as a class book, the others are for, you know, choice. In the elementary school, a teacher might have a private library for books that supplement a lesson, which, you know, if you're doing pilgrims, I'm just throwing something, you must have, you might have like six books that you use for pilgrims. And the choice library that's in the classroom is usually books that are appropriate for grade level. And most of the kids, or most of the students, get their books from the library. It's not like there's controversial books, I mean, you might have...
I didn't say they were controversial, I was just saying we don't know about them.
Right, and, you know, I had a whole personal library of books I used for lessons, and you got, the board at the time didn't know what books I was using. They were just my discretion. And that's what we have to remember, is the teacher discretion is what should be paramount, because obviously, they're using them as tools. So, I think that's important to remember.
Thank you. Sheetho, on the podcast, do we still have a robust list of topics to still do podcasts on? So, we're still looking good there? I think you included some of them, right? Okay, good. I went through all the ones so far, it looks like generally, they have between 75 and 100 views. So, I was wondering if there's any way that we might look to market, boost, enhance the fact that they're out there and available for consumption? So, perhaps the Communications Committee can take that up and see if there's anything we can do that's free, that we can boost them up. I think the most notable change from the first one is, you know, the emergence of Dr. Sutter as our own Joe Rogan in the district.
Maybe a bit of fun in another host, maybe they'll get you some more views.
But from some, you know, the first podcast, you didn't want to do it. Now you're very comfortable behind.
That's it.
Maybe a blooper.
Michelle?
Perhaps this is something we could bring to our marketing classes to give them to think about.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. Mr. Berrios, policy.
Thank you. Policy met on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. In attendance were myself, Dr. Sutter, Mr. Rea, and Ms. Chappell. The policy is listed. We have policy five, three, three, seven, service animals. That was a revision, and I believe we concluded that we really couldn't find the revisions. So it's pretty much the same policy that we had passed earlier in the, in the fall. There was policy twenty-four, sixty dot one five, special education and service training needs for professionals and paraprofessionals. I remember, Dr. Sutter, correct me, we're currently doing this today, just just kind of made it a, we solidified it.
Yes, I meant that.
Yeah. And then policy ninety-one, eighty-one, co-curricular athletic and co-curricular activity volunteers. And just made, reviewed the revisions in the policy, so. Just on a side note, at school boards, I had a pretty healthy long conversation with our friends over at Strauss Esme. They gave me some information, which I'm going to type up and get to everybody as far as policies, how they define policies, you know, being mandatory, important, you know, all, all the different terminologies that we hear. And services that they could also provide the district for review of policies that might, might have been sitting on the shelf for too long and needs to be reviewed, so. Anyways, that's, that's to come in the future. Thank you. That's my report.
Judy, please.
I'd be curious to know, do we have any service animals in the schools at this time? I love the one about the horse. I thought that was awesome.
Not to my knowledge at this time.
We don't have any.
I love the horse.
No animals.
Little horse, not a fake horse.
Mrs. Goldner?
Okay, I do have a question. Do we have an, an, a policy for artificial intelligence, the AI?
We're still looking for real intelligence, but I think, I think, I think there is.
For AI? No, I don't think we have AI, we don't have an AI policy. I mean, I'll, I will go through it again, but I don't.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I think, Dr. Mulrooney, you can speak to that. I think we have a.
We don't have a policy per se, but our student handbooks, I do have AI as part of the academic integrity.
Right.
So we talked about it there.
Do we need a policy for AI?
Um, so they, they actually have a couple, a couple of recommendations.
It was talked about.
Yeah.
Strauss Esme?
Right, well, not, in a couple of the classes, the AI classes. I sent Jeff to all the AI classes.
Well, we have a PD day on November fifth, and we have a session on AI. We'll be talking about, the easy conversation is AI for teachers. I mean, teachers are using it to make their lives easier. I'm sure, I hope, I hope we all are, right? The second conversation, which teachers could talk about for a long time, is academic integrity. You know, okay, oh, kids are cheating, but we're going to put a timer on that one because they could go forever. The third one is how we're using the classroom, how we're teaching kids to use it. Because if, if we're not doing that, I, I think we're not preparing them for the future, because it's going to be part of their jobs and part of college. And so we're really starting those discussions now, getting teachers comfortable with using it in the classroom, setting expectations for what's acceptable, use what's not. And, you know, we're going to grow it from there. So as a result of that, November fifth session, we're going to have a, have a committee grow out of that. Some teachers, administrators, where we can start to hopefully pump out strategies for teachers used at the course of the school year and turnkey that.
Thank you. Michelle?
I was just going to say thank you for, you know, thinking about this comprehensively, because I am seeing it in colleges being applied. And my workforce is now is actively employing this in different ways. So knowing that we're trying to be in front of this and instill our students with this knowledge is excellent. Thank you.
Actually used AI to generate the title to our podcast, Beyond the Bell. I used ChatGPT to generate a list of suggested titles. That's how we got to that one, so. It's probably the first and only time I've used AI, but that's okay. Mrs. Cogan, Buildings and Grounds?
Buildings and Grounds did not meet. We got an email update on the projects that are all moving along as expected. So you all have access to that email update.
Any questions for Allison? No, are there any liaison reports? Seeing up. Let's see, we are up to the approval.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask one question during finance. Sorry. So, we charge, we charge a convenience fee for adding money on students' meal accounts and for when parents pay for insurance on their Chromebooks, we, we pass along a convenience fee?
The convenience fee is not our fee, it's our vendor's fee, so, yes.
For both?
I'm not sure. I would have to check that one.
We have to check with Dr. Giganti.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, approval of the minis, executive session, regular minutes of October tenth, twenty twenty-four. Have a motion, please. Judy, seconded by Wendy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldner?
Abstained.
Mr. Chaffo?
Uh, yes. Okay, Superintendent's Report, number six, Dr. Sutter.
Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening, everyone. Our administrative observations and evaluations are underway. I have been speaking with administrative staff and touring buildings and classrooms. The feedback has been terrific, and I continue to hear the school year is off to a great start, and we're doing very well. Mayor Barbario, James Cryin, the Town Business Administrator, the BOE President, and Mr. Chaffo. And I visited Eastlake, Littleton, Brooklawn, and Parsippany High School on Thursday, October seventeenth, in order to show Mayor Barbario of classrooms and capital projects that were put on hold due to financial concerns. We also showed the mayor the new six classrooms that the district added to the Littleton school that we used with our own budgeted money. On Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the BOE President, Mr. Chaffo and I, were invited by Mr. Ngocino to a meeting with the park developers and owners, because they wanted to introduce us, or, excuse me, they wanted to introduce themselves and inquire about how they could assist the school district. Mr. Chaffo and I went to the meeting, listened, thanked them for their hospitality, and explained to them that we would update the BOE on our meeting, which was done via an email memo to the board. Our, our QTAC, for those of you who are unaware, QSAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is a system for evaluating the performance of public school districts in New Jersey. The system was created in two thousand and five by the New Jersey Legislature. QSAC allows the New Jersey Department of Education to monitor and evaluate school districts, measure how well school officials manage tax dollars and educate students, determine the level of state oversight of local district governance, and ensure the school districts comply with state laws and regulations. To that end, as part of the QSAC process, districts are required to fill out DPRs, which is in essence a self-grade. We have to have this done by November fifteenth. The DPRs focus on five key components of school district effectiveness: instruction and program, fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel. The BOE members have received these self-evaluations, which we will submit these DPR scores to the county office. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent bulletin items one through forty-six, with addendum and reading items forty-seven through fifty-nine.
Any questions for Dr. Sutter? All right, seeing none. Secretary's Report, Mrs. Tedesco?
Hi, everyone. On tonight's Secretary's Report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the school bus evacuation drills for the fall of twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So under new business, Joni and I were discussing where we wanted to put this on the agenda, but we figured we'd get through most of it and then go to the board goals, as it could be a lengthy discussion, and we may not even finish it tonight. But we did put on a shared drive an editable document that had some comments. And I think Mrs. Venos has shared that document at the board table with the edits and comments and I'm not sure if there are suggestions. I didn't look at the column on the right, but not even sure how to start this discussion. So, Judy, you want to, want to start us off?
What do you, what? I wasn't listening.
So we have our, our board goals?
Right.
Uh, any comments on how, how they're written, what the goals are?
No, I think that we discussed starting from scratch, and I think we have made it more workable pertaining to us. You know, it's not just a rote thing. I'm looking at some of the suggestions that were made, and they're pretty valid suggestions. I think that every year, our board goals really should change a lot, unless you've met, you know, unless you haven't met them. But I think this year, there was a really good job of really making them pertinent to our business at hand.
Okay, thank you. So for goals one and two, it seems like those are pretty standard. So we get a consensus that, as written, goals one and two are okay?
I had a question on there. Is there space here for acknowledging, going into this contract negotiation here, that coming to a fair, respectful agreement should be part of our fiscal goal? That was a question I had.
Well, I, I think in light of our closed session discussions, perhaps not. You know, as Dr. Sutter discussing our executive session, maybe not.
I thought that, it was, it was a genuine question.
I, I believe you.
I just think we have to look at our finances at this point.
So again, I'll put it out there, goals one and two seem to be okay as they're stated here.
Well. I guess, what was the intention of, of D, support current expansion project? And how, like? Because if we're, if we're going to put support current expansion project and we're going to be evaluating ourselves if we did it, well, in what way, you know, are, shouldn't we be specific or at least name three things or of how we see ourselves supporting that expansion project? I mean, it's got to be.
So Joni, if the text is black, that's what was discussed and agreed at our last meeting on the seventeenth, right?
It was there from the.
From beginning.
And if it's colored, it was edited or commented on by someone. So that was, that was a line that was from our October seventeenth meeting. If you want to expand it or add to it, feel free. Was there a suggestion on how to supplement D?
Well, I mean, we would have to know more about the, are we talking about the phase that is already almost completed in terms of, do we have, you know, do we have all the furniture for all the, all the rooms? I mean, what are we talking about, like, in, in support, you know, or for the second phase? I mean, I put our name in for, you know, maybe a, you know, for a free classroom, but.
So just, just to clarify, so I think it is a valid point, right? We're trying to make sure that these are measurable.
Right.
So I guess the question becomes, how could we support? What, as a board, could we do to support the current project?
Ensure there's funding. We ensure there's funding. It's the administration's job to make sure the expansion works.
Right?
Well. Just structurally, in this goal, this is, we're, that D is subsequent to direct the administration to it here. So we are essentially saying to, with that point D, support the current expansion project. And so perhaps we could leave it at that and with our trusting the administration to determine what supporting that goal looks like, because it doesn't need to be measurable to us. We would then need to measure the, like, have we, our, our goal there is, did we direct the administration to do that appropriately?
If I may?
Please.
I believe that your goal is, is proper, and I think that we've spoken about this goal in the executive session and in the public. We have put all of our money that we have available to us through either capital reserve or excess surplus, and with the idea being that all of that money will be going towards phase two of the Littleton Edition Project. We have been given approval by the board to move forward with that, because we do believe we have those finances. And we have now contracted our architects to move forward with the design portion of that, with the intention that we can get that done, submit this, these, these plans to the town before we do anything else, so that we don't run into any unexpected problems like we did in the first round. And then we'll be moving forward with going out to bid. So I think that goal that you have is great, support current expansion project by what the information that we've been given, that what we've done so far. And, and so far, we, we think we can go with phase two. So I don't necessarily know what other information you're going to be there, besides what Mr. Chaffo said was ensure the funding is there.
And to Wendy's point, I, I think that, you know, if I had that be included in the first part of that, right? Make sure that the directing the school operating budget, I think that addresses that. So I'm comfortable that that's covered, and that's, and that's measurable.
Okay, thank you.
But do we need it?
Yes.
Consensus on that?
It'd be nice to do it, because you want to succeed at it.
Because it's, we'll make sure, right, that this stays in the forefront of our mind. It won't get lost as other budgeting needs come up, right?
Right, that's a, that's a goal. That's something we need to get done.
Okay, we have consensus on one and two?
Yeah.
Okay, moving to three. So we have some significant edits. Outreach, the board will take steps to increase transparency in our processes and more effectively engage the public by, and then the font gets really low. Regularly showcasing positive events in the district by ensuring that events are recognized during board meetings. Coordinating public communications via social media, such as video on the go and other methods. So that was our sub-goal A.
That's, sorry.
Sure.
That's a goal that, I mean, I've been talking about that for years, having teachers come in and students come in. And we've done some of that. But I, I really, you know, in going to the schools, we've seen teachers doing really incredible things. And the idea to have them come into a board meeting, maybe, you know, one meeting a month, have a teacher come in or students come in with the teacher and talk about what they do. We have the red bots come in. We've had, mostly the red bots have come in.
Yes.
And I think it would be nice to have, like, I remember one year, we went to a New Jersey school boards meeting, and we were given toothpicks, and we were said, you know, we were doing, doing an activity, and this teacher taught at Intervale. And she would, she said she would love to come in and do it at the board meeting, but it just never came to fruition. So I think it's important to really have these teachers come in and share what they do. That's kind of outstanding. Because that's, that's what's going on. And unless you go there and spend time in a building, you don't know what's going on. And I think that's unfortunate, because when we go on our walkthroughs to the, for the times that Dr. Sutter has us go through, we see amazing things in the classrooms. And I think it's important that the public see those amazing things presented at board meetings.
So I think it was my comment here, how and who? How do we do that, and who does it?
Can we? Since we, since we've been doing, for example, the committee as a whole, and that we were saying, okay, one meeting a month, maybe we could consider doing something like that, we could say quarterly, you know, because we can't be, you know, having to showcase, you know, just to spread it out a little bit, because then you have to look at our calendar and say, when do we have, you know, awards, you know, award ceremonies, et cetera. you know, award ceremonies, et cetera? So in, in that, in looking at it, said if we could provide, you know, if we could have at least four of them a year, you know, however, you know, it's like, just to start, to see how it goes, you know, then at, at least, you know, again, that's measurable, that's something that we can start off. We could see how it goes, and how we can expand, you know, something like that.
If I, if I may? I, I think the proper process of being mindful of the PTHEA contract.
Right.
Right, the idea would be that you might wanna send an invitation to the, the PTHEA president from the board and say, this is what the board would like to see. If you're interested in it, maybe we can get a list of your members that would like to come and do those, rather than have it come from the administration. Because I think that'd be the better, better route to go.
Right, no, I agree. It should be a voluntary thing. But I know that some teachers would jump at the chance to share what they do. We have teachers that, that do our mini grant.
Invitation, open invitation out, and we had a signup list like a Google sheet, then we could, we could certainly do that.
We have teachers do mini grants, and they come here, and they, they bring all the materials, and they share what they've done. I'm not suggesting the mini grant people come, but something along those lines. You know, we can look at the calendar, we can see what's going on in meetings, and block out some meetings.
I think that that's the proper way to go. Send an invitation to the PTHEA president, tell him what our plan is, or what your plan, the board, would be, and have him talk to his members and maybe set up volunteers to come do that.
To showcase them.
Yeah.
Correct.
I like that. And I like Suzy's suggestion about starting with four a year, right? And if it goes great, then we can expand it, but at least it gets us started.
Right.
Okay, who would like to draft that memo to the PTHEA president for Kate and Bob to review?
Communications.
Communications.
Communications?
I know, you were looking at me. So it's fine. Yeah, I asked you.
Wendy, Wendy.
Put a draft, like a review in Communications.
Yeah, that would be great.
She does it in her sleep. Look at her, she's starting already. I see her. Ready?
Added to my to-do list.
Okay. Added to your to-do list. All right, who, who wants to do Three B? Because I'm not gonna read all of these to them.
I have a question about A, if you don't mind. I just wanted to ask, and this might be a dumb question, but when you say positive events, does that include all the concerts, all the things that we sometimes have, you know, we love going to throughout the school year for all the different fourteen schools?
So why don't we just talk about ourselves? Because I, I made a couple of comments on there, but none, none in that section. So I'm not sure if I made that suggestion and what they had intended by it.
The only reason I asked that was because I wanted to make sure that we're not, I didn't wanna burden Ms. Benos with giving us a whole list of the whole years with the concerts and things like that without, if we.
But they're on the calendar.
They are on the school, they are on the calendar, yeah.
Yeah.
But would that be included in the four times a year? Or we wanna include, you know, engaging?
Well, showcasing, I mean, it depends on how many teachers would want to, one. And second, with what, positive things that happen in the district? Well, you know, the same, for example, we give out awards. But to, you know, an award to a sports team, that's one thing. But let's say when they've won a concert, you know, like, awards for musical awards or whatever, I mean, we could always invite them and, you know, and they could sing, you know, like the chorus or whatever, they, they could, they could show what, what they won with, you know, sing the song that they won with, or whatever. And again, I am, I'm just guessing at this. Like at Christmas time, we had the kids come, the strings. Oh, yes. When we had the strings kids come and perform, you know, that was. But they weren't videotaped at the time? No, but, but it would be nice to.
That was a showcase. That was a showcase.
They were videotaped?
Yeah, they were. But, I mean. But to be, but to be clear.
Sorry.
But to be clear, I, I don't think this is saying we need to showcase everything, right?
Right, right.
I, I think, but, but part of the showcasing also means just talking about the great things that are going on in our district, right? So we don't have to have people come all of the time to present, or to share with us what they're doing. We could just talk about it. And I think we already do a very good job of talking about some of the wonderful things that are happening. It's just making sure that it's at the forefront of our mind. So, you know, if at every meeting, we just take a moment to recognize the things that have happened, that's also making progress towards this goal.
Can, for example, when we do awards nights, it would be nice if, you know, when we, when we have the teachers' recognition, you know, there's someone there, take a picture of them, you know, with the, with the plaque that they get. But maybe rec, you know, like, making, we need to do something to make those award nights different, because it's sort of like, you know, it's like, they've won something. They need to be celebrated, they need to feel good about it. And I just feel that it's like, they just, it's, it feels like a revolving door as you're calling them, and, and, you know, whether it's to take a team photo of them, or, or doing, you know, it's just. I know it's thirteen years' worth of them, but, you know, for me, but just something, you know, I'd like to see a little more excitement in, in, in the, in the envi, in the atmosphere on the sites.
It's being at two, having been at two of them, it's a difficult situation, because there's a large volume to get through. And everybody is having to sit through everybody else's. So I appreciate what you're saying. Right, I appreciate what you're saying, that, you know, it is a special moment, and we do want to recognize it. And that's why we do take a moment, right, to recognize everybody. But we can think about if there's anything else extra special we could do, but it might just be difficult, given the volume of people involved and the time it takes.
You know, they win championship or something, that's a big thing, you know, for the district.
And you'll remember that we, when we do have champions, we actually invite them to board meetings, and we give them usually a plaque and take pictures with them afterward. Often, yeah.
Every time.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Even robotics, right? It was, you know, all sports.
I don't know.
So I think, I think it's worth noting, but I, I think that that's included in here. We don't, we need to get any more specific about it at this point.
Andy, were your concerns about how and who addressed in this discussion?
To some degree. I just wanna also remind the board that we cannot put additional administrative responsibilities on, on the district administrators to do, these are board goals. You know, so if we're gonna be inviting people to board meetings, that falls to the administration to kinda put that process in place. Because we, as a board, cannot go out to the PTHEA or the teachers and say, come, come here and showcase events. That's gonna fall to the administration. So be very careful that we don't, you know, overburden them with additional responsibilities.
Right. Yep, fair, very fair.
I think that's vital, and perhaps one of the, like, in thinking about how we may operationalize this goal, might be to Michelle's point, that it's our work to go to things and recognize and kind of be able to witness them, and then report back to the community as much as, in addition to inviting folks.
I think that that's an excellent idea.
It's my understanding that if we check with you, the superintendent, that if I say I wanna go to Mount Tabor to observe a science lesson, if, as long as I get the okay from the superintendent and the principal, I could do that, correct?
Madam Attorney?
Not as, not to, not to, not to.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna speak from my heart and say, a lot of times, I would say this. The teachers, the administrators, myself, everybody here, it's a difficult job, right? And when you see someone coming into your classroom that's a board member, or, or forever, that, that is not generally there, the heightened anxiety that that provokes for them is, 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 is I find awkward. So for me, if I'm a teacher, and I'm going back reflecting on my career, if I see a board member in my classroom, I'm going, what did I do wrong? That's what I'm saying.
Behaviors change too.
So, I mean, I think that, I think that the idea of a board of education.
So I would just say, for purposes of going into a classroom, unless, unless there's been something set up ahead of time with, with the superintendent for the purpose of simply visiting the classroom. However, what the ethics speak to is really when you guys go in for productions, musicals, that type of thing. It's not really to go in and, go in to observe classroom activities.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Dr. Sutter, real quick. I'm kind of forgetting how we did this prior, but, like, when we had the strings, the strings children come in and perform for us, that's an invitation by you, correct? Or the superintendent?
I would, I would, I would speak with the, with the supervisor and see, you know, if that's something that would be, because we're not asking teachers, we're asking the supervisors to.
Right, correct. And then, like, even with robotics, right, when they came here and did, a couple of times, they did the demonstration, so that was worked out with the club, I guess it was.
Or Mrs. Effner will reach out.
Right, correct. So, and I know whenever we get, like, invited to, to read Across America, or we get invited, I think it was the International Day at the Knollwood, if I remember, that was, correct? We're formally invited by the principal, by the principal of the staff to come to their school.
Correct.
For the teacher?
I'm sorry?
Can a teacher invite somebody?
I, I, I mean, it usually comes with Ms. Benos, but.
We send several.
Superintendent does.
I send out two.
Yes, correct.
We get an invitation, we send it out to the board.
Right.
Whoever wants to go, then we let the principals know who's.
Like, for the Saturday coming up, right? So I mean, there are things that we are invited to formally that, that are on our schedule, which would definitely fulfill the, the thought of having four events that we could talk about and shine, you know, you know, toot our horn here on the district. I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, I remember when I first came, got on the board, especially with the grade schools, I mean, a couple of times, we had some performances for the play that they did at the grade school level. I thought that was pretty cool. Now, it was rare, and I'm not sure how that got organized, but it definitely, the place filled up. So I mean, you know, maybe those are some of the things to think about, but, you know, from my perspective, I mean, I go to a lot of events currently as a board member, you know, like, I'm gonna try to swing Saturday's event. So, you know, that's just, you know, and I can definitely talk about it.
Judy?
In your thought about a board member going to visit a teacher, it might make, that might heighten their anxiety. Well, when you have board members go to PTA meetings, do you think that parents are not as heightened as when they just have their meeting? I know it's the same idea, right?
I think, I think we wanna stick to the board goals. Like, I don't wanna go, like, we're in the weeds already with a lot of this stuff, so I don't wanna, like, be out, out in the field. Let's stick to what's, everyone had the opportunity since the seventeenth to comment on this document. We're gonna stick to the document and the comments that are here. You wanna modify the language that exists, that's fine. You wanna add or delete, that's fine, but I'm not gonna add additional things to this right now. If we don't get through this tonight, there'll be another opportunity to make revisions to this document online. But I don't wanna go all over the place. I personally think it's a really bad idea for board members to show up in classrooms. And in fact, even for events, there was a, at least an understanding that a board member would email the superintendent and Mrs. Benos and my, whoever the board president was, and say, I'm going to attend this as a courtesy. I don't think that's happening.
Oh, no, they do.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah? I, I don't see those.
Well, they usually just go to the superintendent myself.
Okay.
So that the principals know who's coming in.
Okay.
The board members that go, I'm always.
So if someone goes to a football game, they're letting you know?
No, not at a football game.
Like a conference.
No, not, not a conference, a, a play, a musical?
No, yes, they're going to Girl Scouts or, or Boy Scouts, and they're going into the school, they always let me.
During the day.
They're going to.
During, during the day?
During the day.
Okay, gotcha.
They always do.
Okay, you guys need to decide how you want that written and what you want to do with it. Eric?
So are we good with A, or do we wanna change it?
Well, you mean the showcasing, we said.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Can I just ask a question on Three A, B?
Well, hold on, let's just conclude on A.
Yeah, that was, oh, A is fine.
Okay. Everybody, is everybody good with A?
Is that, is that A part, is that part of A, this B right here?
You mean the coordinating public communications via social media?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just had, that's why I said Three A, B.
B, oh, yeah.
I just had a.
All right, I get it.
That's okay. So, I'm sorry, I had to keep this going, but I just had a question about whether that should be, like, a Three F, because coordinating public communication would be a social media video on the go, that's, you know, that involves putting it on the website, that, is that gonna be an additional burden or anything like that to?
We're not doing it.
Right, no, so I just wanted to ask if Three A, B, that coordinating public communication should be a F? That's my question.
Coordinating.
Not a grade, but just. Should that be a separate bullet, is all I was asking?
Yeah, I think you're okay with it there.
Yeah.
Because it's related to the showcasing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So does B become C?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
No, what will happen is the AA will become AI, and then the next one would be II.
Okay.
It's in there right now. All right, so then B?
B, my guest.
Oh, we create, B, we create office hours, they could come in and talk to us.
Wait, what?
Like, like, an open house, you know, like, board open house, or, you know.
For the full board?
Or just, wait, I mean, it says identify and pursue opportunities for school community and municipal engagement. Isn't it for community to come and talk to us?
Uh, no, the, the blue on our stage is the rest of that sentence. Identify and pursue opportunities for school, community, and municipal engagement.
Ah, okay, I was only, I was only reading the, the live part, yes.
The blue is the, is, is just the edited language. Where each board member will attend or contribute to at least five? Because I was like, I don't even know how many, it's a reasonable thing. Instances beyond general member responsibilities. The idea is just that we were talking about kind of our responsibilities to committing to this work, to going to, you know, so I think, and, and maybe I was feeling a little guilty when I was drafting this one, because I know Tim is great at going to a ton of events.
Right.
And sometimes I'm like, oh, I have Saturday morning, is my kid, am I feeding my kid pancakes on Saturday? Or can, you know, like, and so putting a number on a goal for us that we would want to do these things that are outside of our regular responsibilities, but I think we all recognize are valuable, seemed like it might be unreasonable.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, some of us already, I mean, I know Mrs. Mayor does.
You're doing great. You're, you're killing it.
Well, you slackers, right?
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
Do we get a pin? Do we get a pin at the end of the year?
Sticker in your helmet. Well, I think we do get to say, like, and that's why there's a question.
I wanna pin to recognize I went to Plaza Bunch.
Yeah, yeah. Like, and, and it's just a knowledge that, like, what is, what is a good number for each of us to aspire to be doing, to going to plays?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we wanna have our engagement with the public, we gotta be with the public.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And it shouldn't be like a duty. It should be something that you go to because it's something enjoyable.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's, you shouldn't just do, okay, I check off number one, I check off, it should be something that's enjoyable, that, you know, you're out there, you're seeing what kids are doing. So I think five is a decent number.
And again, come back and share with the board.
Right.
Right, showcase.
Yeah, I mean, Wendy could say, boy, I did three, and let me tell you, they were hard.
You know, things about, like, if we're doing five, and we have, you know, ten months of the school year, that means you just, when we are being conscientious about our own schedules, like, oh, I didn't go to something this month, I better go to a basketball game.
Yeah. I think five is reasonable.
Oh, we gotta go to those.
So can we change instances to events or meetings? Because instances, I'm not sure what an instance is. I know it's an occurrence, but maybe events and meetings, or events or meetings?
Events beyond.
I like that.
Events or meetings?
Events.
And, and is it only, is it only things that are in the public? Like, so if a board member volunteers to be on a union negotiating committee and meets ten times through the school year, does that count?
That's a duty.
That's a duty.
It's a vol, it's a voluntary duty. It's a valen, it's.
Everything we do is voluntary.
Yes and no?
That's different.
That's a duty.
Okay.
That's expected as a board member, if you are called to do that.
That's a duty.
That's what your duty is.
You gotta do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You're not gonna get away with it just because you're doing negotiations right now.
All right.
All righty. So, some things are deleted.
C, I agree with the comment, that's a responsibility, not a goal, I wrote it, but I think it's not actually a goal.
Sorry.
What do you want?
With C in blue, I had written, all board members will act in accordance with the NJSBA Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and will avoid the appearance of impropriety or bias when engaged in the public, and that was a revision from the previous goal, positively represent the board at district and community events, I was trying to kind of put an external benchmarker on it, but then Michelle had commented that it's a responsibility, not a goal, and she's correct.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we need to be on goals. We just should, we just have to do those things.
So, are we striking everything after B?
So, that whole thing comes up?
Well, C, D still exists.
Yeah, D is.
D still exists?
C, I think we can.
Yeah, C can go.
D is crossed out on mine, but.
Yeah.
There's another, there's another D.
There's another, oh.
Guys.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're down to advertise existence of Q and A box.
Oh, D down here. It's like a Z in front of it.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
May I?
Advertise.
May I suggest the removal of the language of respond promptly to individual questions asked?
Which one, I'm sorry? D, the ZD.
In D.
ZD.
The current, one that's in blue. I would suggest to the board to remove the language of respond promptly to individual questions asked.
Just respond?
You shouldn't, those questions should be referred.
Because we don't respond.
Correct, so that's why, if this is a board goal, it should not be.
Right. We don't respond.
Crossing that line.
Is there a Q and A section other than the FAQs on the district website currently? You know, we'd have to.
There was a Q and A section.
It's there, okay.
Do we still put everyone's questions?
If we get.
Like, if somebody asks a question, we do do it?
If it's of general interest.
Yeah, we had started that quite a few years ago.
And we don't do the posting.
Joanie does.
Joanie does, so that's not our goal.
Yeah.
We advert, this is for us to advertise the existence, right? So, when we're doing our podcasts and we're talking in public, we can just highlight the fact that this is out there for people to submit their questions.
Yeah.
So, period after, during board meetings, period?
Yeah. Everybody has to do one podcast.
I think our superintendent does such a great job, I think he should do one more.
Not according to my hits, I don't, so, I mean, let's go.
I'm not talking about that part.
That's a marketing problem, not a superintendent.
No, I'm.
So, we're good with D?
Advertise how?
Just period after board meetings.
I think, I, I don't know that we need to specify in that, I mean, it could be like saying it in things, mentioning it in various places, that might be something to be referred to communications, to think about this advertising, maybe we should have a press release, but I don't think it needs to be part of the goals to specify.
Wait, what don't you think?
That we need to specify what advertise means here?
Well, send it to like the PTA, you know, to the PTA presidents, so they could send it to the, you know, to their memberships, same thing with our meetings.
I think the suggestion I was referring, oh, sorry, Allison, go ahead, Allison.
I think it sounds like more promote than advertise.
Advert, promote.
I think that's fair. That's fair. And I think that Wendy's suggestion about having the communications committee think about it is very reasonable.
So, that's two for communications, writing these down, Sheila?
So, promote the existence of Q and A box on the district website via social media and during board meetings, is that how we're wording that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, E. Conduct committee of the whole meetings for the public, for the relevant forums, which are not restricted by confidentiality matters, i.e. personnel committee.
Yeah, I think that's.
Right. Which is what we're doing.
Yeah, so this one's got to cut off, at the top it says, the board will commit to a high level of boardsmanship by, and then it goes into what you have there.
Wait, can I just go back to E?
Yep.
Do we have to be more specific to say we are not, we are not always conducting committee of the whole meetings, it's like select, or, you know what I mean?
So, I had included this one.
We are not committing at the whole.
So, Allison, I had included this one, and I put specifically for the relevant forums, which are not restricted by confidential matters, because that way it limits the population.
I think we should insert before public certain or specific board meetings, just so it's, there's not implication that it's every board meeting.
That's fine.
I think that was Allison's point.
Yep, that works.
Which one? For certain boards?
Oh, certain forms.
For specific.
I would say certain.
They're for specific committees, no meetings.
Not every public board meeting will have a committee of the whole, so we don't want to imply by that goal that it will, so I think we need a qualifier, that's either certain public meetings will have a committee of the whole as part of that meeting.
Because we already have a calendar for which committees do it.
Yeah, correct.
So, we have to make sure that it's certain.
Thank you, Allison and Andy.
Okay.
But you were sleeping over there, Allison.
So, Michelle, can you read the line that got cut off one more time?
Sure, so number four, the board will commit to a high level of boardsmanship by,
okay, provide, to provide or providing, and I can't, I really can't see what's crossed out here. Creating and adhering to a plan to achieve board certification by October 26, and Carol E. Larson mastered board certification by October 2028. So, those who are more learned than I am in these certifications, what does it require for full board certification? Does every board member have to be certified in something?
No, it's, it's.
Go ahead.
It's certain about trainings that they come to us.
Can you use the mic?
It's fine.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I usually have a teacher voice that carries. It's certain amount of NJSBA trainings that come to us, they look at to make sure we have our, I'm thinking what word I want, and I'm totally blind.
I, I just pulled it up, I could read through it if you.
Go ahead. Yeah.
It is earn 16 credits of group training within a four-year period.
Right.
Participate in at least one full-day retreat or equivalent of board workshops, complete an NJSBA policy wellness check, submission of the most recently ratified teacher's contract, and completion of teacher contract settlement survey, which is, is a blah, 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 demonstrate commitment to continuous improvement through annual completion of the board's self-evaluation, comply with current mandatory training requirements for each board member, so there's no, so it's mandatory training for each, is the only additional, or the only thing, and satisfy the governance portion of the NJ DOE monitoring process, and then meet all governance indicators in the annual performance framework, oh, that's charter zone, sorry. Yep. So, strike the last one. So, the most, I mean, the substantive element there is 16 credits of group training within a four-year period and a one full-day retreat in that four-year period.
And they changed it because a lot of, a lot of boards wanted to, to achieve it, but they were having turnover, so what NJSBA did was saying, the, it doesn't have to be the same board members, as long as the board has earned or has, you know, met these qualifications, then they, whoever's on the board then, will receive the, the master, you know, the board certification. I think that's a good goal.
I do, too.
That's a lofty goal. I mean, that would be great, I mean. That's a really good goal to strive for.
And reasonable timeframes here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of the board members are.
Already.
Were already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, there's a, it's because there's a list, and we, and some of that we do anyhow, so. We already do it, yeah.
What was the part about the contract ratification survey?
It's.
It's a long one, submission of the most recently ratified teacher's contract and completion of the teacher contract settlement survey, which is run by NJSBA for the corresponding years of the agreement. The information collected is to provide all districts with the most up-to-date information for negotiation purposes, and is available through NJSBA's members-only negotiation data portal. So, basically, it's NJSBA's way to get us to do their data entry instead of someone else to do it.
Very good.
Right, well, and, and to provide them a copy of our contract.
Sure.
So that they can evaluate it and give us, you know, points of what.
It's all in this repository.
When we could have, I mean, I did that, I submitted ours, and that's when I found out, I, it was quite a few years ago, that's when I found out how many bubbles we had in our, in our.
In your guides.
In the guides, and remember, we, before we went from 11 to 15, I kept on saying, we have a problem. But we already do that.
Yeah, we already.
So, I think that's a good goal.
Do we have consensus on that one?
I like that.
Sheila, do you have a question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
When we were at workshop, I know a lot of people had the little tag that goes on your badge, and some of them say 100% club, and I was just wondering if that is.
I think that was for county attendance at the NJSBA workshop, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and what Robin was sharing is that they, as a district, they already provide that survey, because that's how they can tell, you know, what, you know, what the counties and what the different districts.
The averages and.
Average and all of you.
But you only do that when you finish a contract.
Contract, yes.
Beautiful.
Gotcha. All right, so it looks like.
That's a great.
Four A is approved by consensus.
Yeah.
B, let's see, circulate current draft code of governance to VOE members to be reviewed and commented on by February 14th, and to be voted on by the second VOE meeting in March of 2025.
Mr. President, may I just, I would caution the board that the code of governance is already codified in your bylaws, and so to the extent that you decide to pursue this, it has to be consistent with those bylaws, but it does exist already.
It has to be, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Consistent with those bylaws.
Okay.
And, and a lot of districts that do, a lot of districts that do put these into action, the code of governance that I specifically said, I don't think we, we need it, is because there are, you know, I don't know if you went to Boards Gone Wild, okay, there are some members that are like, that are, you know, they're not, they're ruly and not. Yeah, they have no decorum, and, and so, so that they, so that they put those in, in trying to, you know, but all of, that exists within the board meeting and not outside of the board meeting. Because you cannot, you cannot force an adult, and, you know, it's everything, you know, as a board member, I mean, if, you know, we, there is absolutely nothing you can do to any board member, God forbid, you know, somebody has a, you know, you know, runs a red light and they get a ticket, you know, anything like that.
It's board.
Right, it has to, you know, it's, it's here on the board, this is the only time we are a board, and as, as our, our lawyer just said, it's already in our bylaws.
So, my take on this, it's, it's a goal, right? So, I'm going to look at the language in B. It says circulate current draft of the code of governance to VOE members, that's an action item, right? That seems pretty easy to do. Mrs. Benno's puts on a shared document, whatever that draft looks like, I haven't seen it in years. All right, check, we've done that. Good. Then everyone's going to have a couple of months, and I think it's good that we push it into February, because we will have a new board, there might not be new board members, but there'll be a new board convened in January, and then by February a month later, they can review and comment, that's the second part of that goal, check. Done.
What are we voting on?
Then the board can vote on whatever that document is, and they can choose to adopt or not adopt. And also, it doesn't say it has to be adopted, it says it has to be.
But we have reviewed it, and as a board, we've said we don't want to adopt it, the majority.
You have different board members now.
You mean back for them.
So, so I think, I think the goal isn't, the goal is a series of action items leading to a vote on a code of governance, whether the board chooses to adopt it or not, that's, you know, whoever on the board in March can make that decision.
But is it a, is it a goal? I mean, is it?
What's the point of circulating it?
Yeah.
If you're not going to.
Going to adopt it.
Do any action.
Do you know that for a fact right now?
No, I'm just asking.
Well, that's the point of circulating it.
Right, I mean, it's a.
I don't know.
I mean, there's some people who probably haven't looked at it.
I haven't seen it for years.
Right, and there's some people who probably might need a refresher, just to remind ourselves as to what those, what they are.
Everybody saw it last year.
It's always, it's, it's never a bad idea.
To refresh.
To refresh, right, and just in case something has changed, that we want to make, implement a change in there, that we take that moment to do that. Okay.
And I, I'm not qualifying whether or not the thing gets passed, but I think if it's a goal, that we want to look at it again. It seems like those three segments of that goal are all achievable. May not lead to passing of it, but who knows? Okay.
Do we have to, I don't, I don't agree with that, but.
All right, let's, just draw a poll.
Yeah, right now, you just need a consensus on whether or not you're going to have the goal, adopt the goal.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I think if we have, need a consensus or at least a majority that says.
A consent, a consensus as to whether or not you want to adopt B as written.
B as.
Whether or not, I didn't hear you.
To, to adopt the goal, B as written.
Right.
As written.
So, the goal could be anything, not the code of governance, it could be anything, but do we want to adopt that language as a board goal for the next board term?
For the code of governance.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yes, please.
We worked, for ex, we did work hard on that, there was a lot of editing, actually, you had a lot of edits in that document, so I think, yeah, I mean, it was a document that was really looked into, I think to re, set it out again would be a good idea, and let people read it and see if they want to adopt it.
Jack?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I have no additional.
Okay, that seems to be, yeah, may I have consensus? Okay. It shall be a goal.[1681.71]
It shall be a goal.
It should be a goal. Uh, let's see, B, oh, nope, sorry. C.
If I can amend handbook, I feel like handbook is not what I actually meant there, but something like, um, like a, like an extensive pamphlet, um, because we have this pretty extensive binder that has the comprehensive information. When I was thinking about this, I was thinking about, um, like the unknown unknowns that I had as someone very fresh, like being new to the board. Like, I didn't know what a business administrator was, um, and that would have been like useful, um, as like a, here's a job, this is a really important person who does, and this is what she does. Um, and, you know, so even just like, and I have, I've, I've been keeping a list of like, of those things, like, you're going to get an email address. Oh, that's, that's good. Um, uh, and I was thinking of it both as useful for someone who's newly coming on in that November to January period, but also, um, at a previous meeting, if you recall, um, one of our members of the public had said, I would like to kind of know more about, like, about what it's like to be a board member, and there's the candidate's description, but, but that doesn't have the, how we work. So even things like, we have committees, and each, you know, that, that, those, those committees are determined by the president, and you're probably going to be on three of them, you'll probably chair one of them. Um, just some of that information, I thought it would be both useful to someone totally new to the board and might, um, actually have the secondary purpose of being useful to our, to a public.
Is there a glossary of terms? I think that's part of what you alluded to in the beginning of your, it, it, do we have a glossary of terms, or not really, right?
Not really, not.
It's in the binder.
It's a compiled one, I don't know.
I think a lot of that would be covered if, one of our goals was to have a mentor for new board members. I remember one of the meetings I went to in Atlantic City said, new board members should be assigned a mem, a mentor, somebody who's been on the board at least, I forget how many years, that can kind of help them through those first few months. I don't know if that should be a goal to act as, to have a mentor, I don't know.
If we don't want to do this, I'm perfectly happy, like, just co-liking this information myself as not a board goal, and like, being like, hey, you just got elected, you might want to know that, uh, business administrators are a thing.
Um, so I haven't been through new board orientation in, in a while, but that, that's not covered there on, on your, on your weekend away, or?
Well, you don't do it until, um, when I went to board training in like Novem, in, in March, and so that's a solid, you know, election in November.
But there should be an orientation. Board members, new board members should have an orientation with the manual, with Mrs. Benos, the superintendent.
In January.
Usually, after they're elected.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did that.
That, all of that information should.
I didn't, I was thinking of the unknown unknowns, because there were a bunch of things you were, like, I was like, do you have any questions? I didn't have any questions, because I didn't know what, like, I didn't know what I was supposed to be asking.
There is a lot to grasp, though.
You were, you were overwhelmed.
You're not going to gather it all at once.
You were overwhelmed?
That's why I think of mentors.
I was a little overwhelmed, and I love, I love a fact sheet. Give me an infographic.
We could probably have another one then, next time. We probably do, too.
Well, thanks.
All right, we're getting, we're getting silly now.
We were all in it.
Well, why don't, why don't we remand that to the Communications Committee, because you're on the committee and you have this idea of what this would look like. So if there's a consensus that we want to, in addition to the board, new board member handbook, have.
That is something the administration should do, or?
Well, so just to, just to chime in, as a recently elected board member, I also would have found something like that helpful. Um, so I, I do appreciate how, um, the purpose behind it, and maybe it is, you know, getting access to the binder and not necessarily having an administrator actually prepare this, but at least getting access to the binder and leveraging that to find the right things in there that might trigger the unknowns that you didn't know, and again, just reflecting upon your experience, and I'm happy to take a look at it and share anything that I learned too, or that I felt uncomfortable with.
Getting access to the binder, when? The new, uh, new employee?
Well, the binder exists all the time, right? So to create the materials.
So you're, you're elected as a new board member, right, in November?
No.
No.
No, that's not what I mean. I mean, in order to create this that we're talking about.
Wow.
But, you know, the communications, somebody in the Communications Committee gets access to the binder, we're not asking Joanie to do this, right? That's my point.
Yeah, that goes through.
No, but I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, is that the, the orientation is led by the superintendent, the business administrator. I mean, the president, vice president, and, and Mrs. Benos is in there, but it's, it's really like, I mean, it doesn't mean that it cannot be taken over in a lot of districts, it's the president.
No, I don't want anything taken over. I want it to happen exactly as it happened, plus an infographic.
Right. That's right, yeah, that, that's going to stay exactly the same.
So I think, I think you're asking for like a pre-read, right? Like, you'd like to have something that you could preview and then be able to ask your questions when we meet.
Exactly.
And refer to it as your brain actually settles into what you're experiencing.
Because board members know what new board members need to get going, and I think a handbook made by board members addressing things that you questioned as coming in is the way to go.
Yeah.
Frequently ask questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think we get the point, um, yeah, I think that's fine, and I still think it's Communications that kind of takes a look at that. Um, Joanie, do you have a, do, do you have a, do you have a new board member orientation handbook sample that you can pass on to the?
I have mine.
Do you still have yours, right? Okay, perfect, yes.
Mine was a big, a big envelope like this.
Yeah.
It's still like this. Still in the envelope.
Maybe you did, you don't remember.
Maybe just 10 years ago, yeah, I mean, I have the binder.
Okay, our last one. Establishing a board planning calendar of at least three years, drafting and adopting a process of updating said calendar to be distributed to the board by June 30, 2025. I'm not sure who wrote that, but maybe you can elaborate on it?
I did. I was like, I was very Google Doc happy, apparently. Um, just, again, like, we had, I think we had talked about this loosely, that there are certain things that happen at certain times of year, um, and that they would just be useful to have like a calendar at a glance, that this happens here, this happens here, this happens here. Um, it was one of those things that came up at, uh, work, not at workshop, at, um, training, mandatory training one in other boards.
They give you, they give you a sheet that says, usually this is the dates that this type of thing happens, yes.
Exactly. Um, and they were like, does your board do this? And I was like, I don't know. I don't know. Um, and so it just seemed like it might be, like, useful for people to know what we're doing in various and sundry times.
So updating it and, and customizing it to us, you're thinking?
Yes.
Yep.
And who does that? Who does that?
Well, NJ SBA.
No, 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 I get it, there's a form.
Right.
But who does inputting the information into it?
I would think that would be like a board leadership job, but again, if you guys don't want to do this, I'm perfectly happy.
No, no, I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just asking, if the board leadership does it, the board leadership has to get the information from the administration, correct?
Well, you, you get the one to start off, and I think, and I have a couple at home from the NJ SBA, and then you just say, okay, like, for example, budget planning, we just got a calendar for budget, and saying, okay, usually other districts start at, in, you know, in October, we start in November, you know, you know, where, where we can customize it to the dates that we actually do those same items.
And the goal as presented, oh, sorry, do you mind? The goal of having one as presented at NJ SBA was that if we can see what's coming up, um, that might give members an opportunity to make sure we understand all the issues before we're in the meeting and we're like, oh wait, oh, I missed that, what was I supposed to be understanding about this? Um, and so it can be a little more proactive and self-education, was the NJ SBA recommendation on that.
So the question goes back to the NJ SBA, which is a very good, because I do use it, but who is going to maintain the district side of the calendar? And we're not trying to add any more work, because then it's not a board goal, we're on a, so now somebody sitting around this beautiful table needs to become the owner of that calendar.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Like you could say, you know, I plan on it. Many of those dates are driven by statute and/or decision by the commissioner, for example, the budget dates change from year to year, right? The final adoption of the, the budget. Um, but there's a, there are certain dates that are established. You have to adopt, or you have to provide your HIB findings twice a year, once in October, once in June. Um, so a lot of those are set by the, the statute.
Yes, they wouldn't need to be changed, they'd just be like on the piece of paper. And I'm also perfectly willing to strike this if people are like, we know when things happen, we don't need to worry about it, Joanie knows everything, she's going to tell.
But doesn't our board calendar give all that information?
No, for example, what we received, what we received in our, in our, um, in our packet as to the, um, as to the different, um, schools and what needs to, in the board packet.
Right.
Okay? And, you know, the, the maintenance work and, and all of that, okay, we receive that every year, so that we, it's, it, it's already listed out for us and as to what, you know, the plans and the costs would be for that, and it's always around this.
It's June, November 15th, so it's usually the last October meeting.
Right, so, so, I mean, I've taken it for granted, because I know that I get it every year, but it, it wouldn't be bad in saying, okay, in October, we usually get, is that what you're saying, we usually get the, you know, the, what would you call it?
SAMP and the M1, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan?
Comprehensive Maintenance Plan?
And we have, we have a list of these things.
Okay, you have it, and I.
We generate.
Yes. Because I hate to say the board secretary.
I'm still confused about what you're looking for. So if you go on the district calendar, you can see all kinds of events, you can see board meetings, you can see committee meetings, you can see, um.
Events.
Events that come up.
Events, so, so there's that, right? And, and then there's the, let's take an example, the budget process, right? It has a beginning and an end, right? There's all kinds of activities in the middle. Um, is that something that you're thinking about?
Um, again, I am very willing to strike this. Um, I guess I was thinking, you know, like, do we have a process that whereby, say, you know, some boards have a plan, an annual plan for how they're going to do policy review? They're going to do all the 3,000s in this two-month period, the 4,000s in this. Um, and, you know, so there's like a, a kind of an, an external structure to the work that different chunks of the board are doing. Um, and I have, I have ADHD, I got to have it on paper, you know?
Tim was working on that.
Yeah, so, hold on a second here. As relates to a calendar for that, we just said, like, for example, policy review, it doesn't exist. Okay. As relates to the district's calendar, obviously, we all have the district's calendar. And I would say, eight out of 10 times, it follows in line with what you're going to get from New Jersey school boards. But, like, for example, what you're not going to get, because it was just handed to us, is the, are the details of the budget process. So you're not going to get that. Say, you're going to get when the budget presentation is done to the public, when we have to vote on it, so you're going to see all that on our calendar, but you're not going to see the other data on there.
I have a motion to strike it out. I feel like I'm satisfied, like, my, like, wanting for timing.
No, but I, I get what you're saying. I mean, it's sort of, it's important, because I recall that we had done away with every, in the beginning, there was, um, for example, teaching and learning. Every five years, they would go through the cycle, okay? And then we had gone away from that. And then I, I had asked the superintendent at the time, what are we doing about that? You know, how do we know that we're, we're, you know, that, that we're looking at all of the curriculum kind of thing? I mean, it's good information to have, but.
Maybe we don't need to work on it this year.
Right. I think it comes to us, Robin, or the, you know, business administrator will give us that information about the budget and give us the timeline for that. And then, the rest of the stuff is.
So I'm fortunate that we have an incredible administration team.
Yes, absolutely. It was a good thought, though.
It was.
All right, so striking D.
We talked about it a little.
Maybe next year.
So, Mrs. Benos, you'll have this updated with these changes, still on the shared drive for review, and then there's a couple of action items, right? We have the Communications Committee looking at a couple of items.
Three.
Three, a few items.
Randy?
Yes, Allison.
Number three, I don't know if anybody else is looking at it on the actual Google Drive, but I thought we decided we're taking out that, we're going to abide with the code of ethics in the, that one, because we are, we actually have to do that one.
We were strike, we're striking that, correct?
Yes.
Yep, that's what we agreed to.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All righty. Thanks, everybody, for a great discussion. So we are up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who is still, who is still awake, no, who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address the, address in the lectern, state your name and for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come and sign now in the book so that you are ready when first speaker is finished. Okay, we have folks want to come up. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and refer to law 0168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meeting.
You get all that?
You get all that. Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Melanie Medina, I live in Parsippany. Um, so I actually had two, two questions and a comment. Of course, I caught everyone on the late night, so I'll make them quick. Um, so the first question's super simple. Um, I saw a post on the Parsippany Township Schools Facebook page, that there was a, um, like a paper store fundraiser, I don't know if, it was put out by the district, obviously it was on the town schools Facebook page. Um, I don't know if anyone knew where that came from, I just feel like, um, parents wanted to know where the proceeds from that will be going, if there's a particular project, initiative, a certain fund that the money is going to, um, just so we know, you know, if you're going to go out, if any more people go out, if they knew exactly where the money from the fundraiser was going, uh, not just to the district in general. Um, my second question had to do with the posting for the Elementary School World Language. Um, this is super important to me, and I know a lot of other parents. I was a former Spanish teacher, um, so, and I learned Spanish in school, it's how I became bilingual, and now I've made my own company based on being bilingual, so this is something I really was happy to see coming back. Um, my question, I guess, would mostly go to maybe Dr. Mulrooney, but, um, curious as to how one person is going to serve 10 schools. Um, and also, I didn't see a curriculum on the website at all, I know we used to have this years ago, um, and just curious as to when people would be able to view that curriculum, kind of what the plan is for that program going forward, provided we find someone to fill that position. Um, and then, the third thing I wanted to talk about, and I feel like some of you that I've talked to before in the past, um, we've talked about this briefly, but, um, do you want to talk about like the security in our schools overall? Um, I'm lucky that I'm a consultant, um, so for some of you that don't know, I go to dozens and dozens and dozens of schools every single year, um, different districts, different socioeconomic statuses, different size communities, um, and the one common thing that I've found between all of those schools and districts and ours, is that we are lacking some of the things that they all have in terms of security. Uh, I don't think it's wise to name all those things here to a video that's going to be them posted online, I just don't think that that's wise. Um, but I would love to have that discussion with any of you, because I think it is really important. Um, again, as somebody that goes and can compare our schools to many others.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, we'll close the public session, and Dr. Stud, do you have any response?
Thank you, Ms. Medina, I'll have to get back with you on the paper store. Uh, the Spanish curriculum is posted, I believe, right, Dr.?
It's not posted, it's written, but it's not posted.
Okay, it's not written, so we could talk to Dr. Mulrooney about that. His plan, he's discussed with me about the teacher that we're hiring, we could talk to you about that afterwards. And, uh, we do have a district, a district director of security who's working with our principals now, and, um, we'd be happy to talk to you about that after as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are up to roll call vote, superintendent's bulletin number six, items one through 46, with the denim items 47 through 58, and read-ins, may I have a motion, please? Sheethol, seconded by Judy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
I've seen on two, yes to the remaining.
Mrs. Goldur?
Yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Yes. All right, seeing no other business, a motion to adjourn. Michelle, seconded by Jack, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
All right.
I'm so tired of you.